Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 8th Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
Such allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
Present.
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 Present. Present. And our first order of business is the, some appointments. The first one, authorizing the appointment of John Sullivan to the position of Secretary to the Village Administrator. We had our Chief John Costanzo filling in that role for a brief time to help us with our transition, and now he's kind of sick of us, so we had to find a new one. So may I have a motion to authorize the appointment of John Sullivan to the position of Secretary? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, John, and welcome officially. John has already proven to be a big asset to the village, saving us money and working on some projects that are much needed. We'll talk a little bit about that later. The last meeting, the reorganization meeting, there were two appointments that came off the agenda by mistake, so I want to make sure that we correct that. So may I have a motion to appoint Antonio Leo to the Planning Board for a five-year term, and Heather Rinaldi to the Zoning Board for a five-year term as well? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we have some presentations today, and I'd like to start with the Tuckahoe Marble Award. So I'd like to ask John Costanzo to come forward and for his lovely wife to join him, please. Hey, John. So at John Costanzo's retirement, we did present him with a Tuckahoe Marble Award, and we talked about it being the first of its kind in Tuckahoe, and we'd like for it to continue as a tradition in the village. The marble award is being presented to you, and this is an actual piece of marble on the award, and it says, "The Tuckahoe Marble Award is awarded to Chief John Costanzo in appreciation of your lifetime of dedication and service to the Village of Tuckahoe and the Tuckahoe Police Department. You've changed the landscape of Tuckahoe for the better through your leadership, positive contributions, and selfless service." Congratulations on the first marble award, John.
Mayor, members of the board, thank you very, very much for this incredible recognition tonight. Being the first, I guess, of anything, any kind of a recipient of an award like this is a little extra special. The fact that you, ever since May, when I first announced my retirement, Mayor and the members of the board, you've all been so very supportive and gracious to me during the months that followed. Took every opportunity you can, you could, to recognize my service at any gathering and any special event, and that was very, very meaningful to me. Thank you for this very special award and for what it represents. I can't help but think of my mom up in heaven right now because, as a young kid, she would always ask me if I had marbles in my head. So she's getting the chuckle out of this award tonight. But thank you very, very much. Thank you to the men and women of the Tuckahoe Police Department. I feel like I would not be standing here if it were not for them. I really rode on their coattails throughout. So thank you to my colleagues in the police department, to this village board, and to the people of Tuckahoe for this very, very special award. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So having said that, we will be posting the criteria for the marble award for 2024, and we'll be asking for the public to submit nominations so that we could recognize residents who have contributed to the village and the life of the village. So look for that coming up. The presentations, if anybody would like to say any words to the chief? Go ahead once, going twice? Thank you, Chief. The second presentation is from our auditor, so we'll have the village financials for the fiscal year 2023 presented, so thank you for coming up now.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Jeff Shaver. I'm a partner with PKF O'Connor Davies. Happy to be here to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended May 31st, 2023. We have issued what's known as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. It's also referred to as a clean opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion that you can receive. So that means the numbers in the audited financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. A positive audit doesn't mean that you have positive results. It doesn't mean you have negative audit results. It just means that the numbers are fairly stated. You'll see as I take you through some of the numbers, in your case, the numbers are quite positive. I'd like to give you just some financial highlights. If you're following along in the financial statements, I'm on pages 51 and 52. This is a snapshot of the general fund, schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget to actual. So you can see when the budget was initially adopted, it was anticipated $14,67,000 of revenues would be collected for the general fund. That number was revised throughout the year to $15,214,000, while the actual revenues for the year were $14,898,000, some $316,000 less than what was anticipated to be collected. Just two line items I wanted to point out in the revenue categories that cause you to have those shortfalls. In the departmental income category, the largest item in there is the parking fees the village collects, and that was about $118,000 less than what was anticipated. I did, I will note that the parking fees did go up from 2023, from 2022, so certainly trending in the right direction, but there was a shortfall in 2023. And also, in the use of money and property category, the rents charged to the various tenants throughout the village fell short of the budget by approximately $150,000. Those are the two main categories in the revenue part of the budget where you've had a variance with your final budget. In terms of appropriations or expenditures, when the budget was initially adopted, it was anticipated spending of $13,99,000, and that number was revised upward during the year to $14,294,000, while the expenditures, actual expenditures, were $14,155,000, some $139,000 less than what was anticipated to be spent. All your expenditure categories came in fairly close to what was anticipated to be spent in your revised budget plan. There is also some transfers out, what we refer to as other financing sources and uses, transfers out that weren't made to the Capital Projects Fund, so delayed capital projects that resulted in a positive variance of $249,000 on that transfer out category. The net of all these items I'm mentioning was a budgetary surplus of approximately $72,000 because when the, when the village adopted its budget for 2023, it had no planned use of fund balance. All that budgetary surplus falls to actual surplus. So we, you achieved an increase in your fund balance of the same amount, $72,000. The beginning of the year fund balance was $2,569,000, the end of the year, $2,641,000. About the $2,641,000, there was small, one small change from year over year. The majority of the village's fund balance in the general fund is considered unassigned or what I like to call free and clear or unencumbered. It's available for use at the discretion of the board to offset future needs of the village. In the previous year, fiscal year ended May 31st, 2022, the balance was all unassigned, $2,569,000. However, May 31st, 2023, $150,000 of the fund balance was earmarked to balance the 2024 budget. So we refer to that as assigned fund balance. It's been, it has to be carved out to show planned use in 2024 year. And then the residual amount, or the unassigned again, was $2,491,000. So a slight decrease in the unassigned fund balance year over year because of the appropriation of fund balance. So just a caution that, while $150,000 is not a large chunk of your fund balance, to keep an eye on that as you move forward into future budgets, as you don't want that number to continue to grow, as you'll need to generate that in surplus every year just to maintain your fund balance. Certainly, a healthy level of fund balance for the village of this size, approximately a $15 million budget, to have $2.5 million of unassigned fund balances is considered a healthy amount of fund balance. Just also wanted to highlight quickly the amount of bonded indebtedness the village has. Total amount outstanding as of May 31st, 2023 was $6,955,000. Some $740,000 was retired during the fiscal year, and a similar amount will also be retired in the 2024 fiscal year and the next four years going forward. And if you wanted to see that in the audit document, it'd be on page 35. With that said, that's all I had prepared for this evening. Just want to just thank the village treasurer and the village administrator and all their teams for all the hard work they put in and the help they gave us throughout the audit and made it a nice, smooth process.
Thanks so much, Jeff. Is there anyone on the board that have any questions for Jeff?
Yes. Just for people out in TV land and out in the public, could you give a very short synopsis of why the fund balance is important?
So the fund balance is there to provide a cushion for a number of different things. It could be cash flow. If you're having, during every fiscal year, there's going to be low, low collection points, the revenues might, might fall short temporarily. The fund balance will allow you to not have cash flow issues and prevent short-term borrowing. So that's one of the reasons why you want to keep fund balance, and also to cushion against emergencies that might happen that are unforeseen. If there's, you know, a huge storm, which we seem to be getting almost every day, you know, how is the village going to put police out, you know, to respond to emergencies and, and make repairs that are necessary as we've been experiencing all these wild storms? The fund balance provides that cushion. Without, without that fund balance there, you might not have the cash or, or the resources to, to, to make those emergency repairs or do those one-time items. So all that has the effect of allowing you to smooth out your tax rate, so you wouldn't have to increase taxes because there was a big storm and you needed to respond in some, some way. So it helps the taxpayer and it helps the village keep, keeps its tax levy smooth, which generally keeps, keeps most people happier than, you know, large spikes and, and drops in the tax rates.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd just like to highlight two things that you talked about, Jeff, the, the revenue from the meters. And that's one of the things that came up in the last few months, that we, you know, we increased our meter prices, and so that's proven to show that we've benefited from doing so. It's been an effective strategy for the village to try to offset taxes. And also the $150,000 that we took out from the fund balance, I think it's important for the, the community to know that we did that to help balance the budget, and to Jeff's point, it's not something that we want to do on a repeated basis. We did it because we felt like we needed to have somewhat of a balance between tax increase and how much can we pull out from the fund balance to try to help offset the increases. So it's, you know, we're always trying to have a balancing act, and it's not always easy, and it's something that we know is not a good practice, so we, we guard against it. Thanks so much, Jeff. And our final presentation, Travis Melby, on behalf of the Eastchester Veterans Foundation, to present a proposal for the Veterans Banner Program. Hi. Nice, nice.
Hi, Jesse.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Trustees. Thank you for giving me a few minutes. I'm Travis Melby. I served as a combat medic in the United States Army with two tours in Iraq. Actually, as many of you know, Trustee Gachion and myself served in Iraq together during my first deployment. But tonight, I'm here on behalf of VFW Post 2285 and the Eastchester Veterans Foundation to present a proposal that we approved at our last meeting. It is our hope to bring the Veterans Hometown Banners Program back to Tuckahoe with specifics parameters and overseen by the EVF. If I've given you the proposal parameters, but I am happy to read them through. Eastchester Veterans Foundation will oversee the Hometown Heroes Veterans Banner Program in coordination, excuse me, I'm just getting over a cold, in coordination with the permission of the Village of Tuckahoe. Unless the, unless extenuating circumstances, the banners will be hung prior to Memorial Day and be removed after Veterans Day. To be considered for the banner program, veterans or sponsors must complete an application, submit a copy of a DD 214 or discharge papers, confirmation of an honorable discharge, and submit picture, a picture of the veteran. Additionally, the veteran does not need to be a current resident of Tuckahoe. The decision to accept an application is at the sole discretion of the Eastchester Veterans Foundations. Veterans or sponsors will be charged the retail price for a banner. Neither the EVF or the Village of Tuckahoe will assume responsibility for damaged banners. Damaged banners will not be hung, and every effort will be made to contact the veteran or the veteran sponsor of the banner if it is damaged. Requests for a replacement banner are the responsibility of the veterans or their sponsor. If the request for banner exceeds the amount of available hanging spaces, i.e. poles, banners will be rotated annually at the discretion of the EVF. Reasonable accommodations will be made to hang banners in specific locations based on veteran request. If the EVF will, excuse me, the EVF will cooperate with the Tuckahoe Department of Public Works, Tuckahoe Beautification Association, and Tuckahoe Village Board to coordinate veteran banners program. If you have any questions, I'm happy to help where I can. Trustee Gachion is a board member of the EFE, excuse me, EVF, and was at the meeting as this as well, so he can answer questions additionally for this proposal. That is our proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Travis. I just have one correction. When you said to bring the Veterans Banner Program back, Tuckahoe has never had a Veterans Banner Program. We've had the Girl Scouts, the Hometown Heroes banner. So I appreciate that you brought this proposal, and it's really comprehensive. It gives us a plan. I appreciate that. And so I'd like to ask the board for a motion to accept this proposal with minor revisions made by, at the discretion of the village board and the village administrator.
I make a motion to support the proposal presented by the Eastchester Veterans Foundation with adaptations from the village.
And Camille, can you do a roll call for this vote?
Yes.
In favor, in favor.
In favor. So congratulations.
So just so I'm clear, just. Thank you very much, Travis. Thank you for your time.
Trustee Lang, you voted present. Did you mean to vote, did you mean to vote yes?
That's correct. There's something else I want to say. Thank you, Travis, for your time, first of all. Appreciate that. So Veterans Hometown Hero Banners, you made mention that, well, first, let me just start by saying, I want to thank the mayor and the village board for putting the resolution that I first introduced at our Thursday evening work session on the agenda for a vote. A lot of thought went into it, and I hope you all agree that our Hometown Hero banners should be put back up in our village to honor our local heroes that sacrificed so much making and keeping America the freest and best country in the world. I'm not interested in why they were removed. I'm just focused on having them returned to our village as quickly as possible. That's all I wanted to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to say this, Trustee Lang. Veteran and Trustee Gachion, at the work session, presented this proposal, or an excerpt of it, and said that there was a discussion with the veterans to make this proposal. So I find it disheartening that you would co-opt what a veteran, who's the only veteran on this board, brought to the board and said that he wanted to implement in order for you to get credit for it.
I'm just curious, why did it take so long, to be perfectly honest with you?
Because he's been working on it, and whatever he was working on with his, with the veterans, that's up to them. I'm not a veteran, you're not a veteran. Excuse me, I'm speaking now. I'm not a veteran, you're not a veteran.
Well, then why were you up on one of the columns then, if you don't mind me asking, if you're not a veteran?
Trustee Lang?
Thank you.
No one here is a veteran other than Trustee Gachion. He brought a proposal to the board that you were present for, and the proposal was presented to the board now. So let's, let's, let's move beyond that. Let's move beyond that. If you'd like to read the resolution that you brought to the board, you're welcome to do so right now. That's meaning no, you don't want to?
That's quite right, I think.
Okay. Thank you. So let's move on to the adoption of the minutes. Thank you, Travis, for that presentation. The adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the December 11th, 2023 meeting? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that will bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on agenda items. Is there anyone present that would like to address the board on any agenda items only?
Hello, my name's Samantha Christian, 72, Main Street, and the Veterans Banners are the agenda item, right? Again, I would have had no problem whatsoever with it, but I remember the horrors and the harassment and the misinformation spread for the original heroes, hometown heroes. And I don't think that the ones who were, who got the, who created a problem that didn't exist, who were the real ones, the, the veterans and the people spreading misinformation about the original hometown heroes should be rewarded with a banner program. Again, I have no problem with veteran banner program, but it's just the behavior of all those people, you, Danny, Danny Lang included, were responsible for the horrors and harassment that happened, and I was there, I remembered it, and I don't think it's okay, and I don't think it honors people or honors veterans who do serve the community and don't hurt and misfret information and harm the community.
Okay, so thank you for your comments. We have, we've had a veteran present his, his proposal, and we, the board has voted on it, and we think that it's, it's proper for the banner program to move forward with.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees.
Good evening.
Sheila Marcot, 56, Winter Hill Road, Tuckahoe, New York. So I want, I came here tonight to specifically support Trustee Lang. I know his resolution is further down on tonight's agenda. I hope you will be voting on it. I am a little confused at your comments, Mayor. I'm actually stunned. Danny Lang ran a better part of his election, and he was reelected, and he ran with Claudia and Scooter, and, and part of their, their message, if you will, when they went door to door and they spoke to many, many people, many people were disappointed that the banners came down. And I know you know that, and I know Josh knows that, Trustee rather, Gachion, excuse me, and many of the veterans were extremely upset. Danny spent months and months and months talking about it, and I know for a fact, he's been speaking with the town of Eastchester, specifically the supervisor, the Department of Public Works, and he's gone through the logistics and how to bring the banners back to the polls in Tuckahoe where they were originally displayed, rightfully so, honoring men and women who gave service to our country and hailed from our beautiful village of Tuckahoe. Many people want them back, and that's what he did. So to say he co-opted Trustee Gachion's effort to bring a new program, which is entirely different, I'm stunned at that choice of words. I think it was entirely inappropriate, if you will. Josh Gachion, if you recall, came to the microphone, and he praised you for being on a banner on the most prominent corner in this village. Your face was on a Hometown Hero banner. Most people thought that was shameful, and I would agree with them. I hope that this program, and I guess by asking for the DD 214, that's going to eliminate civilians, right? It would have to. So it's not about you or Trustee Lang or any of the other men and women who serve here. It's not about the local librarian. It's about veterans, and that's the way it should be. Josh had plenty of time to bring that program back, excuse me, Trustee Gachion had plenty of time and months to bring that program back, and he never once reached out to the town, not once. What can I do to bring it back? They were taken down, that, that never should have happened. Whatever happened, leave it in the past, never. So Danny spent months, pardon me, Danny spent months working on bringing them back, and so I know you're going to vote on that, and I hope you all vote in favor of it.
We have, we have just voted on the program that was presented.
I understand that, and there's also a resolution to return the, am I mistaken? It's on the agenda.
So let me just finish. When he, when Travis Melby just presented the program that was, was voted on by the Eastchester Veterans, that was, I move to our agenda item number three to, to begin the Veterans Banner Program.
Understood.
Respectfully, there was never a Veterans Banner Program. Let me finish, I'm speaking.
You have the floor, Mayor.
The Veterans Banner Program never existed in Tuckahoe. The Girl Scouts had a Hometown Heroes banner that included veterans and civilians, not just veterans. So when the program ended, the banners came down. It created so much dissension by people, not just on this board, but also people like you, Sheila, in the community. So we said, let's give it a moment, give it a moment for things to tie, to die, to die down, people calling the Girl Scouts of America, complaining. The program ended. Now, a new program has been brought up with a plan, not just pie in the sky, we want a banners program with specific parameters that were being set forth so that the program can be managed effectively, not just because we want to say we support the veterans, and that means that you're supporting the veterans. Supporting the veterans means a lot more, and can we please not speak out in the, in the audience? So that's what happened. So the, the proposal was brought forth, and we voted on it, and that's the resolution. Trustee Lang, I just asked him if he would like to read the resolution that he presented, and he chose not to. That's where it ends. Thank you.
I'm not finished, but thank you for that.
No.
So I still have the floor. You have no time to look on your policy.
Okay, but, but you're not going to be here forever either. There's a reasonable timeframe. You may finish, you may finish.
On tonight's agenda is a resolution that Trustee Lang, you asked him if he wanted to read it. I don't blame him for saying no. He will read it when it comes up on the agenda. The resolution is there for a board vote, is it not?
Yes, and we just voted on it.
You voted on Travis's, Travis's and Josh's new program, which I think is wonderful. Don't get me wrong.
It's the same thing, it's the same thing.
It is not. You have 40 banners of Tuckahoe residents that people paid for, they bought them, they wanted them displayed on poles here in the village.
And that will all happen with this same program.
You're gonna make these people go buy all new banners because it's someone else's program? When the banners already exist?
Ms. Markcott, the board, along with the Eastchester Veterans Association, will implement this program. We're, we're not gonna do this all night, so...
Trustee Lang is asking you to bring back forty banners that are for Tuckahoe residents who served and gave their lives in many cases to this country. Let me finish. Those banners are in the possession of the town of Eastchester, who are willing to send them back, and the town even offered to, will even put them up on the...
Please do not speak out.
Put them up on the poles. So I don't, this is almost like you're just trying to trump Danny, when Josh, for months, you sat idle and you said nothing, you even came to this podium and you praised the mayor for having her face on a banner. I will end it there.
Thank you.
You said your piece, I'll say mine.
Thank you.
I think what just happened is shameful, and I think you should vote on his resolution. It is his right, under the law, to place it.
When he, when he brings up the resolution, we will definitely vote on it.
Oh, that's what I was asking you.
Yeah, there's...
So that's further on this agenda. Am I wrong?
When we get, resolution number three? We will, when we get to resolution number three, if that's what you're referring to, we will vote on resolution number three.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, may I make a couple?
Sure.
So part of what the Eastchester Veterans Foundation had decided to do was also be in touch with the Eastchester DPW. There are several members who don't necessarily need to be named now, but we can chat about that after if you want, who also spoke with members of the DPW in Eastchester to have any banners that wanted to be brought from Eastchester back to Tuckahoe. They don't have to buy new banners. And we have been working with the Eastchester Veterans Foundation on a plan to reintroduce the hometown heroes banners since 2021. It was my suggestion that we wait until after the election to offer a plan or resolution so that the village in no way would connect veterans with politics. Our veterans, myself included, should never be used as pawns regarding, for the government, for policy, or for political elections. I thank the mayor, the mayor for supporting this request and for waiting until after the election to do it.
Thank you. Okay, let's move forward, and can I ask the public to please not call out? So, can we go to, move to a resolution number one? Authorizing the setting of a public hearing for February 5th to consider proposed modifications to the village code as it relates to short-term rentals. We've talked about this a couple of times. Gary, do you want to speak to anything about this?
No, not much to add, Mayor. What I did was, you know, I looked at a bunch of municipalities, kind of picked and choose ones I thought might fit the best. It's definitely a work in progress, it's thrown out there. I think there's a lot of discussion to be had on it, so that'll be for next time.
Okay, so may I have a motion to authorize the setting of that public hearing?
Mayor, can I ask a point of clarity?
Absolutely.
So this is a vote simply to open a public hearing, it is not voting on the specific...
That's correct.
...law that's under review?
That's correct. So we will open the public hearing, Gary will submit a proposed code for the community and the village board to consider, and weigh in on it at that time.
Which is up for modification.
Which is up for modification, yes. Okay, so may I have a motion to authorize the setting of that public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And may I have a motion re-authorizing the execution of an IMA with Westchester County for the dispersment of $149,820 in a community CDBG grant for sewer repair and relining project at Midland, Union, and Washington Street? And if I'm not mistaken, David, this has been done already, right?
Yeah, this, this project has actually just been completed in the last couple of weeks. This is just a timing issue with the county, with grants that come down from the federal government to the county and down to us, just some timing issues, so I have to re-authorize this, but the project is complete, just the paving that's gonna happen in the spring.
Good, and we're gonna wait till the spring. Great, thanks. So may I have a motion?
So moved.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we will make, ask for a motion authorizing that the veterans banners be returned to the village of Tuckahoe. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And resolution number four, authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $1,982,652. And it's high because of pension payouts, right, David? So if anybody's wondering where all this money is going, we have to pay pensions. So may I have a motion to pay the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and that will take us to departmental reports, and the chief, can you give us your first report?
Good evening Mayor, members of the board.
Good evening.
Happy New Year to everybody here.
Happy New Year.
Our traffic safety campaign last month produced nine violations for pedestrian safety on Garrett and Columbus Avenue. We're gonna continue that as well. This coming month, we're gonna be addressing speed enforcement throughout the village. This December, we saw a motor vehicle accident rate elevated from nine from the previous month to thirteen. So we could attribute that to a couple of reasons with high traffic volume from the holidays, distracted driving, et cetera. So we will also be on the campaign for that as well, because we want to see that number come down. I'd like to remind all residents of the snow zone enforcement on the streets that have snow zone signs. This past storm, we had approximately twenty-three vehicles in violation of the snow zone. Again, this is a reminder to the residents, this is for the safety of the DPW to properly clean the roads during a storm. This is not for revenue to give out tickets to the residents, this is an awareness campaign to make sure residents move their car when precipitation starts. Again, the snow zone enforcement begins when the snow starts, and it continues to twelve hours until after it stops. And if you have any questions ever, just call the police desk during the storm or after the storm. We'd be more than welcome to inform you of the snow zone streets and questions. Also a reminder to businesses and residents to make sure any of your private snow removal contractors do not push snow into the street during the upcoming storms. We will be monitoring it and issuing violations. Again, this is, this has been a problem, we try to enforce it. What happens is these private contractors push snow into the streets, it creates more work for our DPW and more of a hazardous condition, and that snow will melt and freeze over. So it's, it's a problem, and we are out to enforce it, but I just want to remind you, if you see a private plow pushing snow and leaving in the street, you could also call us or the DPW to address the situation. In regards to police department training, I'd like to report that for 2023, all police officers in the department completed three separate days of additional in-service police training with Westchester County. This training is comprised of three separate dates throughout the year, where Tuckahoe officers train at the Westchester County Police Academy for in-service training of multiple topics, reinforcement on top of our in-service training here at TPD. This is another example of great participation in shared services throughout the county. Just a reminder to residents with wireless alarms. In the cold weather, we tend to see that the batteries do drain quicker and perhaps need to be changed. They usually last about two years. So you can do, on most of these apps for home alarm systems, you can do a check of your battery zones and see if they're low. If they are getting low, you should change them prior to them going dead and then setting off the alarm, which can be troublesome in the middle of the night and also scary to you when it goes off. But we will be there to respond accordingly, and just to check either way. Okay, so now for my monthly crack tip.
Waiting for the tip. I know Nicole is waiting.
So January brings tax refund season to us. So it's gonna be regarding IRS taxpayer identity theft. As the tax season comes upon us, this year we will again expect to see an increase in IRS fraudulent identity theft. This occurs when your identity is stolen, and then the thieves file tax returns under your name and social security number, and then obtain your refund and direct deposit it to them. Signs that your identity is stolen is you'll get a letter from the IRS inquiring about suspicious tax returns you did not file, or you'll get an IRS notice that your existing online account has been accessed. You can also get a notice by mail that your e-tax return, there is a duplicate social security number. So what to do when you encounter this, and I hope many people do not, but unfortunately, there will be some residents that have this. First thing you can do is come to the police department, and we're gonna fill out a report regarding it. And then what you'll do is call the IRS immediately. And the reminder, the IRS will never call you, only through the mail. So if they call you for any type of alert, it's a scam. That's all I have.
Tell you to go get a gift card to pay your taxes.
Never get gift cards. Any calls to get a gift card, that's also an alert. I have the fraudulent brochures that we presented to the seniors, it's in popular demand, so we have plenty to give out tonight. I'd also like to advise residents, if they want to see it, they could also click on the link on the village website regarding it. On the village website also, there is the Rave application that we want to promote, and that is for emergency purposes, for event notifications via email. We've been putting out social media notifications via Instagram and Facebook. However, we're gonna really save the Rave alert notifications for serious storms and serious message notifications out to residents. So in order to do that, you can click, go to the village website and click on the Rave link and fill out your information and update it. It'll be, it's, we're slowly growing the number of residents signed up for it, so we hope to continue to do so.
Do you know how many, how many people are signed up for it?
Right now, we only have about a hundred and forty. The prior service, which unfortunately was bought out by this new company, we had multiple other accounts and up to three thousand. However, a lot of that data was corrupt data, false names, false people signing up, so it was cleaned up, and now we have a list of solid, real residents with the village. So I ask you, if you're watching this, I mean tonight, just go to the website, click on the Rave mobile app, Safety, and just sign up, and it'll be a great thing that you'll experience when we do need to give notifications out to residents.
Can we post this on the social media to encourage people to sign up for it, please?
Yes, absolutely.
And then the village, we could just share that post, yeah?
Yes, it's businesses and residents. We also have a business file that we have for local businesses to address situations. However, we do suggest businesses to sign up for it.
Can I ask a question? Okay. So first off, I remember when Rave Wireless was founded, and the guys who founded it, really good, good human beings. I believe they're actually located here, kind of in, in the New York metro area, but that's not my question. So, it's snowing, my car is parked on the street, where do I put it? What are some recommendations, chief, on where I can put that, park that car?
Good question. And the streets that have these snow zones signs, you could usually park on the other side of the street. It's usually on one side only. However, there are certain streets where you can't park on the other side. So what, what we suggest to do is, one, prepare, and two, you can find parking on other local side streets. But we also have, and anybody can call the police desk, we also have certain specific areas where you can park overnight, like the Main Street Lot, where you're able to park there. You're also able to park on Oak Avenue Lot as well, but you have to be out in the morning by the time the commuters come in. So there's other areas specifically, especially in the Fairview, Westview area, where residents can park in the Main Street Lot, and also the Lower Oak Lot. And if there's any ever questions, you can contact us, and we'll be sure to give you the proper information. But so far, usually the, the snow zone streets, the first storms, we see more violators than usual. We do try to promote it, but, you know, we have some weather coming up as well, so just be alert. And if there's ever, ever an issue, just call us, and we'll be more than happy to explain where to park rather than give you that seventy-five dollar violation.
Thank you. Good, good recommendations. Thanks, chief. And Frank is not in here, right? Oh, Frank is there, okay. Frank, DPW superintendent? Yes, hi Frank. Happy New Year.
And good evening Mayor and members of the board. I just want to bring up a couple of good points tonight. I'm gonna start off with recycling Christmas trees. Listen, we all recycle Christmas trees, Bronx Hills, Tuckahoe, Eastchester. We do bring these Christmas trees up to the compost site, and they are made into compost. So just if anybody asks, that's what we're doing. All we ask at DPW that you do not put them in plastic bags, that you please make sure that all the tinsel, lights, and all the decorations are off the tree. Because if that's not happening, and we pick up a tree that has all this, it becomes a contaminated tree, so we need to dispose of it accordingly. So please, I ask that all residents take everything off of their tree and leave it curbside for now, a Thursday pickup. And we will recycle every tree that we pick up, just so everybody knows. I've been being asked that for the past two weeks, and I figure this is a perfect opportunity to bring that point across. I commend Larry to mention the snow zones. I can't, I can't tell you how important it is. But the DPW workers, working in a heavy machinery, equipment, trying to make some of these turns in a snow zone becomes virtually impossible. Those snow zones are there for a reason, it's only so we could do our work. You can't imagine trying to back up some of these massive pieces of machinery with a plow when we can't make any of these turns. It becomes so much more difficult and dangerous for the workers, for the vehicles, for anybody that might be standing in the street during these moments. So I ask that please, snow zones are very, very, very important in our streets. They are strategically placed every year, you know, DPW meets with the police department, we go over each area, just to make sure that we're not really taking away parking from the residents. We're making it as, as really doable as possible for the residents and for DPW without creating havoc. So I ask that please, everybody abide by these snow zones, it's very important to all of us here in Tuckahoe. And most importantly, fire hydrants. Don't start plowing around fire hydrants, keep them very clear so in case there is a fire, fire form could do their job. And most importantly, what I, what I'd like to ask residents to do, and I hope everybody truly listens, is that, you know, we are clearing the streets, DPW clears our streets. And we try to prevent any icing condition or any other issue that might arise. So when those that are cleaning their sidewalks or clearing their sidewalks, I ask that you plow that snow, not into the streets, creating another problem for DPW, but along the curb line. And along the curb line protects street, and it protects our sidewalks. We don't necessarily come around every five minutes cleaning snow that's being thrown out in the street. And what that happens to do after a while is create an icing condition if we don't get to it. So I ask all residents to please do not snow blow, shovel your snow into the street line, just keep it at the curb line, just keep it controlled so nothing turns to ice. It'll be safe for pedestrians, it'll be safe for those that are driving and even walking in the streets during some of these conditions. So with that said, I'm talking about the now pending weather for tomorrow evening. You know, our grounds are saturated, we have pervious soil, and with the heavy rains that we have coming our way tomorrow, coupled with the heavy snow and rain that we most recently had just a day ago, the grounds are saturated. When the grounds are saturated, the trees in our village become compromised. What I mean by compromised is the root system is very weak. So when we have anywhere from fifty to sixty mile an hour winds coming our way tomorrow evening, with the compromised soil, these trees can easily just topple over, limbs could break. It's just a dangerous situation. So I ask everybody tomorrow evening to please be careful. Be careful where you walk, be careful where you go, be careful where you drive. If everybody could just stay in during this condition, it will be safe for everybody. So with that said, I don't have any other questions.
Frank, will you write, will you write a doctor's note? Will you write a doctor's note for people so they can stay home?
Please, everybody just stay home.
Thanks Frank.
Okay.
Thank you. Swadish Pasananda, the director of the library, with some exciting things going on over there, huh?
Good evening Mayor, and members of the, members of trustee and our Tuckahoe community. I have a good news, that library is now open to all of you at the community center, and hours are Monday ten to eight, Tuesday ten to five, Wednesday ten to one thirty, and then it's open gym, and library opens again at four thirty to eight. Thursday, nine to four. Thursday 9 to 4, Friday 10 to 5, Saturday 12 to 4, and library will be closed on Monday, January 15 for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Thanks to John Gucci for sharing the space with us. And last month, I didn't give any news about the program, so our programs are back, so we are trying to do some hybrid programs. Today, we had the hybrid yoga, so we had a couple of people start, came to the community center, and mostly people were still online. So we have now Mahjong, which is very popular, so we started that on Tuesday, Friday, and also ESL classes, which we are doing in two session on Wednesday at 10:30 and 11:45. So first session is for beginners, and the second is advanced. Meditation workshop, also we have senior strength training, art classes, memoir writing, and Tai Chi, and the science fiction book club, all regular program and some exciting program, new ones. So we have a very special program, which is going to be the Saturday, January 27th at 1:00 p.m. for adults and children ages 8 and plus, and the title is the Recruiting Sergeant. It's a historical program, and presented by Michael J. Grillo, and to learn about what life was like for the common soldiers and how Eastchester and Tuckahoe fit into the American Revolution. Local history group will also be on site to answer your question, and this program is made possible through Revolutionary Westchester 250. We have for teenagers Dungeon and Dragon, Makers Monday, and we are starting our new programs for teen, it's called Teen Advisory Meeting, and this is a kickoff on Friday, January 26th at 4:00 p.m. for grade 6 to 12. So what we are going to do, this library, we have this teen advisory board, and we would like you to be a part of it. What does TAB do? You will help decide what programs we will do, what resources you would like made available, and what good deeds we can do for our community. So please join us, snacks will be provided. And for children's, we have craft program, we have art classes, we have graphic novel book club, Smaller Sister, which is going to be Friday, January 19 at 4:00 p.m. for grade 3 to 5, and copies of the books are available. We have pre-K yoga and storytime coming back on Tuesday, January 16. And then we have bilingual storytime, sing along with Miss Elaine, and storytime on Friday. So all these upcoming programs, the library, so please come back, and I know the hours are hard to remember, but check our website. If you have any question, please give us a call.
Thank you, Swadish. And if they go to the Village website, right, they can get that information as well?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much for continuing to try to, you know, keep programming happening while we're in the middle of construction. Thanks so much, Swadish. Okay, do you have anything, Camille? John?
So just a couple of projects I wanted to update the board on.
Can you speak up a little?
So we finally completed the kind of new phone installation project that we've been working on for three or four months now. If anyone notices any issues when they're calling the Village or any of the departments, please let me know or let David know, and we'll work on it and fix it. So still a few growing pains, but it's going pretty well, all things considered. And then, as a whole, it looks like, just to bring this up, yearly savings should be just over $15,000, and one-time savings, because they rewired the whole building, provided us with new phones, it's going to be just over $20,000.
Nice, thank you.
And then, one other thing, online tax payments. As you know, David and I have been working on this. We met with three companies, and we're in the process right now of getting quotes, so we should be getting those in the next week or two, and then we can move forward, hopefully have it done by June.
Okay, great. Is Suzanne serving? Is Suzanne serving on? Okay, I will have to make, send her an email to let her know. So I mean, several people have been asking about online tax payments, and we have, we've heard you, we're working on it, and so thank you to John and David for following up with that. David, do you have anything?
Yeah, a couple of things real quick. I know the auditor came in, gave the report, but there's a lot in this document, it'll be online, you can go through it if you're a nerd and a geek, you can look at all the numbers, it's, you know, pretty fascinating. Maybe that's just coming from me, but I can, I deal with it every day. But it's just a thank you to Ryan Rueda and his team. He spends a lot of time with the auditors on this, puts a lot of effort into this. They come here, they set up shop in our conference center for a week, and he's constantly giving them information. And just kind of all to the department heads as well, if there's any backup and things like that in regards to what the auditors need. So just kind of thank everybody in the team for kind of going through that process each year, and I'm glad it was a good audit. Obviously, there are tight margins in a lot of this stuff, so we continually look at this on a, you know, on a monthly basis and all that. And so hopefully, you know, in a year from now, we'll be doing the same thing, and happy with the audit. Real quick, a big project that's coming up this year is our comprehensive plan. So the committee will meet for the first time this Thursday at 7:00 p.m., kind of just go over the RFP, read through the process, kind of maybe schedule some of the meetings or schedule some of the interviews for the people that have submitted their RFPs. So that project is starting, or that committee is starting up this, this month, so that's exciting. Talked about the Midland Place a little bit, and Grand Street was another project that Con Ed was doing some gas line repairs there. That looks to be kind of wrapping up in the next couple of weeks as well. They're just doing some individual tie-ins right now, so you won't see any major kind of traffic disruptions over there. That's it.
Thanks. Anything, Gary? All right, so that will take us to miscellaneous business, which is really not that miscellaneous. The Village Board meeting will be on February 5th at 7:00 p.m., same bat time, same bat channel. And that'll take us to the Board of Trustee member reports. Trustee Lang, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have a beautification association report. A resident made mention of last month, our Main Street looks beautiful, our lampposts are beautiful, the reefs, boulders are beautiful, and this is all made possible because of the hard work of the Tuckahoe Beautification Association, and generous donations from our village residents and friends, and a small stipend from the village, of course. We are so thankful for all your donations in the past, and we look forward to your continued support. So the committed volunteers of this wonderful organization can continue their hard work in keeping Tuckahoe beautiful. All donations can be sent to Tuckahoe Beautification Association, P.O. Box 142, Tuckahoe, New York, 10707. On behalf of the beautification committee, I thank you. Just another note, they wanted me to make mention, they wanted to thank Deputy Mayor Cronin for her help in raising over $500 for the organization, so they wanted me to extend a thank you to Deputy Mayor Cronin. So thank you for that. That's it for beautification. The community center. With all the construction going on at our library, John is still able to find some small window for open gym, for the kids to play basketball, and whatever else they might like to do. That's on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 4:00. And once that construction is complete, John will be able to increase open gym hours. I visited with Swadish today, I saw the temporary library. I just wanted to reassure the public that all the library resources are the same, just a little scaled down. It's wonderful what this small amount of space that they made such a good use of, so it was nice to see. And lastly, most importantly, they're having a blood drive at the library, and it's called the Forever Rallying for Regina. So please join us for our annual blood drive in loving memory of Regina Fay to help patients in need of blood transfusions. That'll be Saturday, February 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at our Tuckahoe Community Center. Again, folks, Saturday, February 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Thank you so much, Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gachion?
Thank you, Mayor. Swadish, I'm going to start with the Tuckahoe History Committee. Swadish had mentioned on January 27th at 1:00 p.m., the Recruiting Sergeant, by our very own Mike Grillo, will be at the Tuckahoe Public Library, sponsored by Revolutionary Westchester 250th. Adults and children 8+, Thaddeus will be going, so we'll be there. Total Facebook reach this month was nearly 2,700 visits, with their most popular posts in December surrounding our very own retired Chief Costanzo. Ongoing work continues with cataloging and digitizing photos and materials. Anyone who wants to join the history committee or participate in any way can come by the Village Hall on Wednesdays at 9:30, 9:30 to 12:00. And lastly, my buddy Sal wouldn't let me go without saying something about this, I was going to bring it up next month, but I'm going to touch base on this now. We will be celebrating and honoring the life of Samuel Crawford on March 16th at the monument on Winter Hill Road and White Plains Road. But we'll have more details on that to follow regarding times and everything else. The Historic Preservation Commission, Historic Preservation Commission met on January 3rd. They had a public hearing regarding, they closed the public hearing regarding 230 White Plains Road, and the commission has 62 days from January 3rd to deliver their opinion. Jenny, I see you out there, if I mistake, come on up. They are accepting written comments and opinions until January 18th at 5:00 p.m., and our village administrator will be happy to corral those for you. The link, the link for the last meeting is on the Village website, and I did not see a current meeting on the books yet for February or March, but that will be updated, and I will make sure that I update that on my social media pages as it comes to fruition. In regards to veterans, we talked about the proposal, which is fantastic, and as much as we all want to honor our veterans, I think what's more important is actually helping our veterans. And I'm fortunate enough that I get to do that in my everyday life, but we will be bringing that to Tuckahoe on March 27th. In coordination with Senator Shelley Meyer's Veterans Advisory Council, the Bronx VA, the Village will be sponsoring a PACT Act event at the community center. The Mobile Health Clinic will be on site, as well as claims agents for those who may have had exposure to burn pits or Agent Orange. So this isn't just for current veterans, it's for, I mean, more recent post-9/11 veterans, it's also for our more senior veterans as well. We will also have community-based organizations present to help with SNAP benefits or education needs, and we will even be organizing a company to come in who gives out free tablets with five years of free Wi-Fi for anybody who is receiving a VA or DOD pension. So that's great. Any veteran who plans to attend, please bring a copy of your DD214. We are working with the county to be able to file those, so they'll be on record. Anyone who would like to attend the event as a vendor, please contact the Village. We would love to have you, if you are supporting our veterans. And lastly, the Girl Scouts are hoping to drop Valentine's goodies off to any veterans in Tuckahoe or Eastchester. If you are a veteran or know a veteran who could use a little extra love on Valentine's Day, reach out to me or reach out to anybody here, and we will make sure that the Girl Scouts drop off their little basket of love for them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that, trustee. Yes, yes. Okay.
The work session's going to be January 22nd at 6:30, and the meeting's going to be February 28th at 6:30, and we'll put those on the website. Nothing's changed, Jenny, right? Okay.
January 26th? Is the work session? 22nd? And the 28th is the, February 28th? The meeting. Okay, thank you. Trustee Engelbert?
Can I first ask, Josh, what is this elusive DD214 form?
That's a great question. So anybody who's discharged from the military receives a DD214, which offers your service information. That's generally pretty accurate. It'll tell the type of discharge status you had, if you were deployed anywhere, any awards that you may have received. So really, it is your proof of service.
Okay.
If you're going to go into the VA system or anything like that, you'll need a copy of your DD214.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, I know you all missed me last, last month and my report, and it feels a little odd not to be first kind of anymore, but let's start with the Eastchester Union Free School District. I am sure many a student was sad, but many a parent was happy when our mini snowstorm did not result in a snow day on Monday, though it does look that there's some stuff coming up in the coming days and weeks. So students, kids out there in Tuckahoe, get those spoons under your pillows ASAP to make that snow day happen. Okay, so more, more seriously, more importantly, there's actually a Board of Education work session tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. in the district conference room. You can go to work sessions, you can actually come to our kind of work sessions. They will be discussing on the agenda is a change in the number of academic periods that are conducted during the school day. Now, this sounds like a small, a small thing, but it actually has implications, good and bad, from a pedagogical and curriculum perspective. So if you are interested in this, if you have children in the district, or you're just interested in pedagogy and curriculum in general, which is actually super cool, I encourage you to go on down to the district conference room tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. Other cool stuff in the district, the EMS Players Club will be performing Be Our Guest, a Royal Tea Party on Saturday, January 13th, next weekend. Two performances, 12:30 and 2:30. I'm now sure that all of you have Be Our Guest, Be Our Guest in your head. Okay, so, Tuckahoe Public Library, woo-hoo. The library is now open for business, I loved seeing those balloons out there. Swadish, of course, has shared the new hours. Go on down to the library, they've done a really great job. I love all the library staff equally, but that children's area is really charming, well done. Elaine on that. I'd also like to give a shout out to the DPW and David, in getting some much-needed additions to the heating in the community center. Yikes, popsicle librarians don't give good book recommendations. Do stay tuned for a possible fun game night, that's in the planning stages. It's sort of a mashup, right, of the library and the community center, with pizza and snacks and board games. I do want to remark, given some of the conversation this evening, that Swadish, Elaine, Miriam, Justin, and the entire library staff is a hero every day, in my mind and in my family's mind. And the work they did during the pandemic really knit our community together in powerful ways, and they have an impact on our children and seniors every day, kind of all days of the year. So you are my heroes each and every day. Okay, last bit, the test committee. There hasn't been a meeting of the test committee since my last, last report, but today, as I turned on my space heater and thought about kind of warmer, warmer days, I thought about what a community garden is going to mean for our village. And while I was advised by Donald that, no, I cannot in fact bring a bottle of Chardonnay to the community garden on a summer night, I can work with different community groups to educate more people on sustainable kind of farming and producing ingredients for perhaps a very nice Capriese salad, though I'm sure someone in the room knows a good place to get some fresh mozzarella for that salad. So stay tuned also on the work for our community garden, kind of right here in Tuckahoe. That's it for me.
Thanks, trustee Engelbert. We did miss you, by the way.
I bet you did.
Deputy Mayor Cronin?
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year to all of you.
Hard to follow that.
Yeah, that is a hard act to follow, for sure. So I'll keep it pretty simple. The Planning Board is meeting Tuesday, January 16th. There are only two items on the agenda. 108 Sagamore is returning with a retaining wall proposal, and 225 Marveldale, which is the Verizon facility, is interested in redoing their parking lot and a retaining wall. Everything else has been adjourned. I just want to mention that last month, there was a proposal at 125, I believe it's 125 Marveldale for a new yoga studio, which was approved. So that should be coming in the next few months. The Zoning Board of Appeals is adjourned for this month. The seniors are back, they're back in business with the new year, so they are still accepting applications if you are of age, I believe it is 60. If you want to join the seniors, it is a wonderful thing to do. You should know that there are wonderful programs for our senior citizens. So if you have the time and you are interested, you can always reach out to me, and I can even bring you there the first time if you're a little nervous. But, you know, we don't really talk a lot about the programming that goes on there, but the seniors, you know, have a variety of programs, from physical fitness, yoga, Tai Chi, dance classes, but also arts and crafts, and then they will come and they'll bring, like, the chief came in last month to do a program about fraud and preventing scams. So just know that this is a wonderful opportunity for those members of our community who are seniors, and it's relatively inexpensive. I believe the cost for the year is about $50. So, and they have great parties, which we dance a lot. And yeah, and they do trips, they go to casinos and bus trips to the pier and just a lot of different places. So know that that is available to you. Eastchester... Eastchester, the Eastchester Senior Center is doing their first, like, evening senior program tomorrow night, elder care, elder care mediation, estate planning, and healthcare. So that's tomorrow night, 7:00 PM at Lake Isle. If you're interested in more information, you can reach out to Sally Veltiti at the town of Eastchester, or it's posted on my Facebook and my Instagram pages. So I just wanted to, oh, I wanted to mention that ECAP is doing the MLK Breakfast this, next Monday, the 15th. I'm sure the mayor will talk more about that. Oh, okay, never mind. And I just wanted to say thank you, congratulations to John Sullivan, and welcome on a more permanent basis. John is one of our unsung heroes here. We have dozens of them that work in this village and that do incredible work without getting, you know, the kind of celebration that other members of our community do. But welcome to John. He's already made such an impact on, on the village and the administration here, so a more permanent welcome. I want to say congratulations to John Costanzan being the first recipient of the Marvel Award. That is truly a tough act to follow, so I'm curious to see how we follow that up next year. I want to take a moment to thank trustee Gacion for his work with the banner program. It's easy, when you're not involved, to think that, oh, you know, things just happen here in the village. These kinds of programs take a lot of planning and forethought and detail orientation. They don't just happen, so you can be talking for months and months about doing something, but it is really important to be able to put the work in, to negotiate the things that have to happen, and to think about the details and the plan, so that these programs work well and they're sustainable. So I just want to say thank you to Josh and to Travis for the hard work that they've put in, and the Eastchester veterans for entertaining, running this program. So I just want to say quickly, the board, on behalf of the board, I'd like to send out condolences to the Provenzano family on the loss of Joseph Provenzano, longtime resident, and also brother to Sal Provenzano. We also lost two other residents, this long-term residence this month, William Phipps and Jean Peckman Maruli. So condolences to those families. And then finally, I just want to say huge shout out to DPW. I woke up on a Sunday morning, it's Sunday, everybody's cozy in bed, it was snowing, it was kind of awful out, but my street was clear. And it's so nice to know that anywhere you go in this village, when it is snowing, the roads are clear, if they can be, because I drove into other municipalities I will not name, and those roads were not clear. And so I just want to, huge shout out to DPW and a big thank you for all the work that they do.
Thank you, trust, deputy mayor. I want to reiterate also the thank you to DPW. I think it's also one of those unsung heroes. You just wake up, the snow isn't there, and you just go on with life, and no one's thinking, wow, DPW's great. That's because they do their work seamlessly, they do it early in the morning while you're still cozied up in bed. And it's worth noting that this is hard work, it's hard on their bodies, it's physical labor, and I get so many thank yous from residents and notes saying our DPW is second to none. So thank you to DPW for your hard work, and thank you for clearing the roads quickly during this storm. Hopefully, we don't have too many more of those. I also want to reiterate condolences to the Provenzano family, Sal who's here, and Elaine, they've had a very rough year, and so my prayers and my thoughts are with you. We want you to know that we're here, if you need us. And there was also, you know, a huge tragedy in Bronxville, so we have been working to support the Bronxville Police Department and the Bronxville Board. They're, one of their sergeants, and the entire family has died, and so they're coping with the loss of the entire, the entire department and the village. And I want to, you know, thank the chief for keeping me posted on the events that happened there, and also for really stepping up. The police department in Tuckahoe just right away picked up and went to work in Bronxville to help support them, to cover some shifts, and, you know, to really just support them in, during this time. It's a real tragedy, and so our hearts are with the Bronxville family, the police department and the village. I'd like to thank the residents for the many Christmas and holiday cards that I received and a couple of gifts. I got a few ornaments from some of the young people who I proudly put up on my tree, and it reminded me of the great village that we live in. So thank you to everyone for, who sent me Christmas cards and holiday cards. I appreciate it, and I appreciate you thinking about me. Thank you also to the Tuckahoe Schools Athletic Council for inviting me to quote-unquote referee, very loosely, the basketball game between faculty and the Harlem Wizards at the high school. That was such a hoot, it was so much fun. We had, you know, faculty playing with tutus on and, and the Harlem Wizards, you know, just doing their little tricks, so it was a lot of fun to do that. There were a couple of, oh, and also to the employees and the volunteers. We had dinners to celebrate and to thank the residents who either volunteer on particular boards or committees, and also to the village employees. We took some time out just to come together, break bread, and to say thank you. So I want to just say another thank you to our employees like Camille and Gary and David and John and Jackie, who's not here, and Connie in the courtroom, and all of the departments. You know, thank you for your work all year long. I know it's a very small token of appreciation, and, but it's, nevertheless, it's a token of our appreciation to say that we thought of you and we wanted to come together and have a dinner to celebrate the work that you do for the residents every day. So thank you. I want to just give you guys a couple of quick updates. The New York Conference of Municipal Officers, the legislative program priorities for 2024, there are a few of them. I just want to highlight that there are some things that the, this, this group, the program, works on to try to get legislators to respond to the needs of our communities. And in the, under the area of finance, one of the priorities is to increase state aid to cities and villages. I'm going to talk a little bit about the State Comptroller's email that went out that talks about some of the needs in communities. But to increase the state aid to cities and villages, we're constantly fighting for that aid, providing dedicated funding for local water and sewer infrastructure. You've heard David and Frank talk about some of the infrastructure work that we've been working on, whether it's paving streets, the sewers, we are, you know, dealing with flooding, all of those things cost money. And in a small village, you guys heard our budget, it's very limited. We have to pay for, you know, the great employees that help run the village, and sometimes money is very, very tight, huh, David? David said, mhm. So we're constantly fighting for those, you know, those funds that we deserve to have. Also, under employee relations and public safety, reforming the civil service law. I've been talking with the chief and with David about positions that we're going to have to fill. You know, the chief was lieutenant, he was promoted, so now we have positions that have to be filled. And dealing with the civil service law, that's very antiquated, is, makes it very challenging to find, you know, workers that meet the needs of the community, that have the criteria and the skill set that we want. So we are looking to push to reform the civil service law. And then as far as EMS goes, establishing general ambulance service as an essential service, and to try to get support state funding for New York State EMS service providers. So those are a couple of the legislative agenda items. And then the last one that I know trustee Engelbert will appreciate is promoting sustainability and alternative energy resources, is one of the agenda items and priorities. So just to give you an update, a brief summary about some of those priorities. And then we received some information from the State Comptroller's office that really just speaks to the number of full-time local government workers employed outside of New York City shrinking 7.9% from 2007 to 2022, and how there's really a crisis in workers in government and municipalities. The average annual salary was nearly flat from, with an overall increase of 2% from 2007 to 2022. So we are, we're, and we're not exempt from this. We're also struggling, we're feeling this pinch. There are two, you know, he talks about two events, key events during this time that have impacted this, the workforce levels, the recession in 2007 to 2009 and COVID. And I'm going to quote him, he says, "Local governments were hard hit by two major events, most recently the pandemic that have taken their toll on staffing levels. Local officials must continue to meet the difficult task of balancing their budget while making certain they have staff in place to ensure critical services are there for their residents." And you've heard me talk about this month after month at different meetings, how we're tasked with balancing having the right employees in place and balancing a budget to make sure that taxpayers aren't taking on additional burdens unnecessarily. So we, this is something that we are, that's forever in the forefront of our minds. I know it's forever in the forefront of the village administrator's mind, and the department heads who have to deal with civil service rules to fill positions. And it's very hard to try to keep really good staff because they get poached. You know, there are other municipalities that are bigger, where a village, where smaller cities and towns could probably pay a little bit more, and so it's easier for them to, you know, take someone in a village who's doing a really good job and pay them a little more. So we're struggling with that, and we have to contend with that. So just to give you an update on where we are with those difficult decisions that we make every day. And I think that is it for me. Let's see here, make sure. Yeah, that is. So that will end my report and will take us to another opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board. Okay, Pam, I'm going to ask the people who are present in person first, okay? I will let you know when.
Good evening, Mayor Andino.
Good evening.
Deputy Mayor Cronin, and our trustees Engelbert, Gacion, and Lane. I'm Darrell Taylor, 35 Jefferson Place, and I'm here tonight to speak about the ECAP's Martin Luther King Breakfast, which will be held next, this Monday coming up on Martin Luther King Day. This is the annual breakfast, but due to the pandemic, we haven't had the breakfast since 2019. And many people asked us when we were going to bring it back, and so we are finally bringing it back. So it's on, like I said, on Monday, January 15th, and it's at the Reformed Church of Bronxville, 180 Pondville Road in Bronxville. Anybody that doesn't know where that is, it's right across the street from the firehouse. Our keynote speaker is Dr. Belinda Miles. She's the president of SUNY Westchester Community College. We will be honoring Dr. King, the true drum major for social justice. And our local honoree is Max Pierce, Mrs. Lovely Bill's grandson. Most of us know Max Pierce. If anybody in this village deserves to be honored, he's surely one of them. Max has done so many things in the village for social justice and giving back in the village. He also does abstract art, and some of his art that portrays social justice will be on display at the breakfast. And the second honoree will be the Asbury Crestwood United Methodist Church, and the church will be receiving the Tuckahoe Service Award. The ticket prices for adults is $35, children 15 and, children 12 and under is $15. And we also have several sponsorships, and also you can purchase a table of 10. In order to contact, for information, you can contact ECAP at 914-337-6434. I also have posters that we have for the breakfast with the information and flyers. I have some posters with me tonight if anybody wants one or needs one. ECAP, this is really the only fundraiser ECAP has. They don't do a lot of fundraisers, this is the major one, and this helps support the employees that take care of the after-school program. And just a little bit about ECAP for those who don't know. So the food pantry is twice a month now. They have the after-school children program, they have summer camp, they have summer jobs, and they also do like clothing drives and different things. For me, it's personal, my mother was one of the four founding members that started it in the 60s, and if there was ever some, any kind of organization that deserves help, ECAP is one of them. So we know, you know, bringing it back after four years of not having it is not an easy thing to do. I think the last breakfasts we had, we had well over 200 people. So we're hoping that people will come back out and support it, and we say thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in person that's here that would like to address the board?
Hello, my name is Samantha Christian, 72 Main Street, and I would like to bring up, as it is, the third anniversary of January 6th, the Republican-led domestic terrorist attack on our Capitol Building. It's very scary times, knowing that there are still people at large, locally too, nationally, who agree and aided and embedded the attack on our Capitol, which I think is worse than the attack on, that happened right here in New York on 9/11. But I'm also a member of the Juneteenth Committee, and what most people don't realize is that Juneteenth inspired three amendments to our Constitution. The 13th Amendment, the 14th Amendment, and the 15th Amendment. But today, I will recognize the 14th Amendment as inspired by Juneteenth. For most people, it's actually an extremely important amendment that protects all of our rights and protects us from domestic terrorism. 14th Amendment, Section 1 plainly states, "All persons born and naturalized in the United States and subject to jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." So the 14th Amendment, Section 1, all of us citizens, we need to know about our constitutional rights, because this, this part of the law, of our Constitution, protects us from all forms of discrimination and oppression and denial of our rights. And I will move forward to Section 3 of the 14th Amendment, which is extremely important right now. No person shall be a senator or representative in Congress, or elector of president and vice president, or hold any office, civil or military, under the United States or under any state who, having previously taken an oath as a member of Congress, or as an officer of the United States, or as any member of any state legislature, or as an executive or judicial officer of any state to support the Constitution of the United States, shall have shall have engaged in insurrection or rebellion against the same or given aid or comfort to the enemies thereof."
Can I just ask that you keep it brief? Because we do have other people that might want to address the board.
So this means we actually do have a defense against domestic terrorism. This was created to prevent the Confederates, the original enemies of the United States, from being a party or having any representation in government. But after January 6th, this means that the entire Republican Party is actually banned under the 14th Amendment, Section 3, from serving office, civil, and Congress, and whatever. So they shouldn't even appear on the ballots in this illegal and unconstitutional--
Please don't, please don't address a particular board member. Just address the board as a whole.
Yes, no, I am. So I'm just saying that we have these defenses here in our Constitution to invoke at any moment to protect, to protect American citizens from domestic terrorism.
Thank you.
May I?
Thank you. Let's, let me, you can, you're, you can have a seat now. Thank you. Yes, you may.
I'd just like to remind you that 2,977 lives were lost in 9/11, including Tocco residents. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any non-agenda items or agenda items? Yes?
Anthony Fury, 300 Place.
Hi, Anthony.
On Washington Street, there's been a water main break by the deli. It's been there for at least a few months. I don't know if anybody is aware of it. But eventually, staying that long, you might create a sinkhole in there. And it's between the street and the curb. It's right by the deli. It's been there for a long time. I figured they fixed it when they had the other water main break. But it's still there. Just to let you know before you do any paving or anything there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Pam, I think that leaves it up to you. Well, so we've already passed a law in Tocco that any new development would require 10% of that development to be affordable housing units. So as far as a local law, we've passed that. There has not been any final decisions made at the state level regarding this issue. Yes? Deputy Mayor, you wanted to say something?
I just wanted to say something. Ms. Christian, I know you are very passionate about your feelings about January 6th. I think January 6th brought out a lot of emotions in many of us. It was a very scary thing to see, and it was hard. I also just want to caution us about drawing groups of people with large strokes because it only causes more divisiveness. I belong to one political party, I, you know, but probably a lot of the people who were there that day would call themselves independent because they don't feel represented by other, you know, whatever, whatever they were there. I just, I am cautious about drawing one group, one political party, with such broad strokes because I've seen, we've seen how this goes, you know? And it leads to more divisiveness and more hate. And I think that people who do things that are immoral and illegal should be prosecuted. And I think that the people who were guilty on that day should be prosecuted. But I, I just, you know, I want to be careful about labeling an entire group of people because I belong to groups that I don't want to be labeled either. And that's my piece.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to address the board? Okay. All right, so having said that, we will adjourn the meeting. Remember that we have our next meeting on February 5th at 7:00 PM at Village Hall and via Zoom. Have a good night, Toccoho.